Good evening. I would like to call the Order City of West Bend, the Licensing Board. We have five items on the agenda. We have a quorum. Item number one, approval of the minutes from July 21st, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second? Any corrections or deletions? There are none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item number two, new Class B beer license, La Mexicana 2526.
Motion to approve.
Do we have all things approved?
Yes, we do.
We do? Okay. You have a motion?
Motion to approve.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. Item number three, new cigarette tobacco and electronic vaping license, Med Meridian 2526.
Motion to approve.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. VFW 2025 car show special event.
Motion to approve.
Chief? I know there's something special here, so I'm going to ask you if it's okay.
Yeah, thank you. Just wanted to bring to the council's attention, it was every once in a while, most of these permits we handle without bringing them before you, but every once in a while, when there's something that might spark some interest from the citizens or constituents, we want to make sure you're aware and approve of us moving forward. John Klemos, who we all know, very dedicated veteran in our community, contacted us, and as part of the car show, they are going to be sounding off, I guess is the right word, a cannon every hour to honor the vets. So it'll be once an hour, starting from 11 till 4. Might get some calls to the PD. We'll be ready to address those.
No projectiles.
No projectiles, just a lot of noise after the Fourth of July. People get used to it, but by August 24th, there might be some calls, but we'll be able to, no different than having the 21-gun salutes at times, we're ready to receive the calls for it, just seems a little bit unique and wanted to make sure that, one, the citizens are aware as well, but that we have your approval to move forward.
Okay, we have a motion. All second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item number five, secondhand article and jewelry dealer license, 2526.
Motion to approve.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Be no further business before the Licensing Board. I adjourn. I would like to call the Order City of West Bend, the Board of Public Works. We have three items on the agenda. Item number one, the approval of the minutes from June 16th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Alderman Berquist?
Second.
Second? Alderman Schmidt? Any corrections or deletions? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. Okay, item number three, we're going to switch these around because we have, item number three has to be approved by the Board of Public Works before we make a motion on item number two. An agreement for improvement within existing easement, 2702 Great Forest Drive. Good evening, Max.
Good evening, thank you. This item is for approval of a fence within an existing municipal easement. This came to our attention when the neighbor came and asked permission to install a fence. The neighbor is going to be the next item at the 2642 Grace Forest, Great Forest Drive. And then, when we looked at it, we realized that the fence at 2702 was not permitted by the city, by council, to be in the easement. So this is just kind of approving them. We looked at the fence where it is, we looked at the stormwater pipe that is underneath that easement, it is deep enough that the fence is not affecting it, but we want to clarify rights and responsibilities. If we need to go in there and fix the pipe, what are the rights of the property owners and their responsibilities, and the same for the city. So it's not different from several agreements that we had in the past to have private items within an easement that we would have for utilities or for storm sewer. And the property owners signed the agreement, which is based on our template, and we would recommend approval of the agreement to let them keep the fence in the easement.
Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Schmidt?
Second.
Alderman Sternick? Is there any questions for Max? There are no Alderman Sternick?
Just in terms of the general responsibilities, I don't need all the legalese, but ultimately the property owner is responsible for any removal or re-
Maintenance.
Maintenance or anything of that.
Yes, removal if we need to get in there, and then replacing it after we're done.
Sounds good, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? There are none. We have a motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Okay, item number two, agreement for improvement within existing easement, 2642 Great Forest Drive.
Thank you. So this is for the same kind of improvement within an existing municipal easement. The reason we needed to have the previous one approved is because this fence is going to use a side of the existing fence to complete the enclosure on their property. So this is the same deal for the neighbor next door. We recommend approval of their fence being in the easement as well.
Motion to approve.
Alderman Sternick?
Second.
Alderman, Alderman woman, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you.
No further business before the Board of Public Works. I adjourn.
John, I'll give you a meeting off. I call the Order, a meeting of the Finance Committee. We have two items on the agenda this evening. The first one is the approval of the regular meeting minutes from July 21st, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Zingheim and Alderman Sizer. Any additions, subtractions, deletions, corrections? There being none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then motion carries. The second item is our first item for consideration, Resolution Number 25, authoring the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed 20 million 200,000 general obligation promissory notes, Series 2025B. Welcome, Phil. Good to see you this evening. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Phil Costin with Ellers. Good to be with you. In your packet, you should have two documents, one prepared by Ellers. It's our pre-sale report. Looks like this. The second is a resolution that will be asking you to act upon later on this evening that has been provided and prepared by Quarles &amp; Brady, which is the city's bond attorney for this issue, and it's been the city's bond attorney for a couple of decades now. So those are the documents I'll be referring to. So as I think everybody here is fully aware, we are starting the process to finance the new fire station. And in our discussions over the last six months, we kind of came to a resolution internally with staff here at the city, and that was to break this financing up with the primary financing occurring at this time in 2025, towards the end of 25, and then a secondary borrowing to finish up the project occurring when you do your capital borrowing in 2026. So typically, you've done your capital borrowing for roads and those kind of projects in late spring each year, and so at that point in time, hopefully, you'll have a good idea of where you stand from a cost perspective on the project, so we could kind of narrow in on an actual amount, not just borrow the full amount now and hope that it all comes in on schedule and on the latest bid. So our goal, and then there's also the possibility, I know that the city was going to look at possibility of grants that might be available to drive down some of the final costs as well. So we broke it up with the majority of the financing occurring at this point, and then with the rest happening again late spring 2026. So this is a one-purpose issue. Many times when we come in front of you, we have multiple purposes. We're financing equipment, roads, sometimes water sewer improvements, TIF. This is all going to be for the fire station. You did an issue back in April of this year for your normal capital, so that was the 2025 A issue. This will be the 2025 Series B issue. And in the pre-sale report, we have a number of items that I'm going to kind of reference. So this will be a 20-year financing maximum. We can go out in the state of Wisconsin as 20 years, general obligation debt. We certainly expect the fire station will last a lot longer than that, but we're maximizing the term that we can, which is 20 years. So this will be a 20-year issue. We'll have a, what's called a call date, which will be a nine-year call, which actually we're having an eight-year call in this case. So after eight years, you have the ability to prepay the debt, if you have a lot of cash laying around, and/or you can refinance the debt if rates are lower. Likely the latter, not the former, but if you have the ability to call the debt for a savings, then you have the ability to do that anytime 2034 or after for the rest of the life of the debt. This will be what's called non-bank qualified, which means if you borrow less than 10 million in a calendar year, which you will not be in this case, you're called bank qualified. And banks, if they bid, have the ability to have some special tax treatment. In this case, there's, this will be non-bank qualified, it'll be over that $10 million threshold, which is not a problem, it just means that we may have different bidders, more underwriters that will be bidding on this issue. This will be a competitive sale. We'll talk about the timing a little bit, but competitive just means we'll take bids, like we've done for all your debt issues, and see who the winning bidder is. Hopefully, this size issue, even if it's non-bank qualified, we'll see five-plus different bidders set up, and hopefully, we'll see more even than that. This will be what we call a parameter sale, and again, we've done this now for the last number of years for most of the issues that we do. Parameter sale really means that tonight, we're establishing parameters around the sale, and I'll talk about those in detail a little bit. And if on sale date, those parameters are met, then there's just a certificate that is signed saying we met the parameters and we accept the bids as they have been presented. And so we'll still prepare all the necessary documents, all the information to you will be available, as well as to who the winning bidder was, what the final rates were, what's the final tax impact, all those kind of things will still come forward to you. So what are those parameters? Some of the parameters are bidding parameters for how we set up bids for different underwriters. So we have a issue size not to exceed what we have in your resolution tonight, 20,000, 20,000, don't you wish? 20 million 200,000 is the maximum size. So you establish kind of the high end, that's the most that you will issue as part of this. We have a maximum and minimum bid, which are really parameters around what we establish, part art, part science, to make sure that we garner as many bids and bidders as possible. We want some flexibility so that underwriters can be creative in how they set up their bids at the end of the day, and so that max and mid bid are important. We have a maximum true interest cost of 5.25%. If you sold today, you would be closer to 4%, so we have a lot of room in here. I can tell you, if we ever get anywhere near the 5 and 1/4, we're going to pull the sale. We've had to do that in the last number of months. If you think back, kind of market disruption around the initial tariff discussion, right? There was market disruption for a period of time. We had a couple of sales that were established and set up already, then we had to kind of pull back and say, we're not going to sell right now, it's just too much turmoil in the market. Doing a parameter sale allows us to move to any date. We'll just be in constant contact with your staff to make sure we're selling on a date that makes sense, the markets are stable, we're not seeing interest rate spikes, any of those kind of things. So we have a maximum in here, but we don't expect to be anywhere near that. And then finally, maturity schedule, just as that. We have the ability to move maturities around to try to get to a tax impact analysis that makes sense for the city. So you could have some interesting bids that come in, and we have the ability to kind of move around the principal payments a little bit to make sure we have level principal and interest payments as we're presenting to you tonight. So that gives us some flexibility to move things around on sale day as well. We did review the city's existing debt. At this time, unfortunately, there's no refunding opportunities. It's been a little while since we've been able to bring that forward to you. Hopefully, if we see the Fed move at some point, and we see a little correction in the rates, we can bring some refunding opportunities to save money for the city in the future. The individuals that'll be involved, other service providers, we listed Quarles &amp; Brady, again, they're your bond attorney, and what they end up doing, again, is providing a legal opinion to make sure that these bonds can be sold on a tax-exempt basis. That's their primary function in this case. You have a paying agent to help make the bond payments, and then you also are going to be contracting and working with S&amp;P Standard and Coors. That's who rates the bonds or the notes, I'm sorry, for the city. And so we'll be walking through all the city's financials with S&amp;P like we did back in April to make sure that we put our best foot forward to, one, retain the rating you have right now, and two, hopefully, at some point, see an upgrade as well. So the timeline for this that we've established is that if you give us authorization tonight, we will then really kind of jump in with both feet to kind of get everything rolling. We've already started the process. And so the process start is really, we send a questionnaire out to the city saying, we need this information filled out. It goes to Carrie, and she and her group put together the financial information we need to be able to prepare the official statement. We will have a rating call with S&amp;P scheduled sometime towards the end of this month, and then we'll prepare an official statement that'll be distributed. The official statement, again, it's like a prospectus on the city that we then use to sell the notes. Right now, tentatively, we're scheduled for a September 10th sale. That's when we'll take bids from all the different bidders and prepare the documentation necessary to award the bid, the winning bid, and then we have a closing schedule for September 25th, and that really does align pretty well with when we expect to see some larger bills coming into the city to pay for the fire station project. You have some that have already come in, obviously, a lot of engineering, professional service costs, those kind of things that have come in already. They'll all be reimbursed as part of this financing as well. So those are the dates that we have targeted. Again, if September 10th doesn't make sense, we'll pull back, we'll be in contact with everybody at the city to make sure you know what's happening at that time. As always, we prepared kind of a financing plan as part of this. I wasn't going to spend a lot of time on this, but again, we have the capital projects being financed, everybody's aware of the latest bid that has been shared with us is 24.7 million for the fire station. Again, we're going to finance 20 million of that tonight, and then start the process tonight, and then the remaining amount will be done at a later date, once we get a final We have estimated interest rates on Table 5, that is in your packet, and we've tried to be a little bit conservative. We took a sale that occurred a couple, a little while back, it's been updated since this, a little while back, and we've added 35 basis points, just to be a little more conservative in where we think rates could end up. I think we're still a little bit on the conservative side. Market hasn't moved very much the last couple of months. And then, as always, we boil this down to a tax impact analysis. What's the impact to the taxpayer, not just in one year when this issue is done, but over the life of the debt? And that's on Table Number 7. It's very similar. I know there was a document provided to the public and also to the council a couple of months back in regards to this project. The numbers haven't changed much from that at this point. And then finally, Table 8 is your borrowing capacity. It's something we always keep an eye on, just to make sure that you have plenty of capacity for future projects. You're limited, like every other municipality in the state of Wisconsin, in how much you can borrow. Right now, you're at 24% of your borrowing capacity. That means you've used 24% of the, of what's allowed for the city, but due to the growth that you have seen in the city, valuation growth and new construction, those numbers have really jumped the last couple of years, and even by taking on 20 million, you're going to go from 24% to 28%. So you still have a lot of capacity, and that's very manageable. When you start talking to S&amp;P about the rating, that, they will view that as very manageable. When we talked to them back in March of this last year, we did tell them this was coming. This will not be a surprise. We always want to be forthright with them to make sure they know what's on the horizon when they're making their ratings, so this won't be a surprise to them at all. Then finally, we have a bond chart in here, and the bond chart kind of reflects what's happened over the last year. We've seen the spike that occurred a while back. It's really been very stable over the last three to four months, and typically, summer is relatively quiet in the bond market, so we don't expect big changes between now and September 10th, when we hope to sell these. So a lot of information there. More than happy to answer any questions you have, timing, process, you know, how we're financing, anything else you have in your mind.
First off, thank you very much for that brief, yet detailed overview of the documents in front of us. Before we get into questions, first I'll entertain a motion on the table. Thank you, Alderman Sparts and Alderman, Alderman woman Sizer, thank you very much. Now, anybody have any questions for Phil? You obviously have done an outstanding job providing the relevant-
I'm going to take it that way.
Relevant information that we need to make this decision. No, again, I appreciate it. I think what you've presented is relatively straightforward, and for the vast majority from the council, we've been through these types of discussions before, so we appreciate that as well. If there are no questions, there is a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
All right, thank you.
With there being no further business before the Finance Committee, I adjourn as Chair.
Good evening. It is Monday, August 4th. It is 6:45 PM, 2025. We have a quorum, but would like to ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
This is a meeting of the common council of the city of West Bend. More than 24 hours in advance of this meeting, notice that the time, place, date, subject matter of the meeting was posted in accordance to the Wisconsin State statute. I would like to ask the clerk to confirm that this meeting was properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Thank you very much. Mayor Angert is out of town, so he will not be at the meeting. I am John Butch, the President of the Council. We have item number one, approval of minutes from July 21st, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Alderman Schmidt?
Second.
Alderman Zingheim? Any corrections, deletion, deletions? If there are none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. We have a downtown master plan quarterly report. Good evening, John.
Good evening. Just wanted to take a few seconds here to talk about the quarterly report that was sent out to you all. We've modified the format a little bit. You'll notice that the main goals of the master plan are still on the left side, but we've used some little icons that then relate to the topics over on the right-hand column, so you can see how the master plan goals are matching up with some of the highlights that we're talking about. Real quick, just wanted to highlight the great partnership we have downtown between the Business Improvement District, Maintaining the Planters and the Flowers, all of those things, as well as Roots and Branches with the Ribbon Beds, and then the Downtown Association with the banner. So all three organizations work really hard to make sure that downtown looks really great throughout the summer months. The other item, which I'm sure you and all the citizens have encountered at some point driving around, is the intersection of Washington and Maine. Part of the downtown master plan goals is to make for more pedestrian and accessible streets. A lot of those improvements at that intersection will deal with accessibility for pedestrians to cross 33. And then the other item is a downtown lighting plan. So one of the items in the master plan was to move forward, sort of a downtown lighting plan. This plan will look at the bridges downtown, as well as the skyline lighting that's in the process of needing some repairs, as well as the potential of illumination of private buildings and things like that. So it will essentially have lots of recommendations that could be picked up by the public or private properties within the downtown area. Committee has been formed for that, and the funding for that particular plan is, the generosity of West Bend Insurance Foundation is providing that funding. So you'll learn a little bit more about that. The committee meets in mid-August, and then we'll have some other outreaches, so stay tuned for more information about that.
Any questions for John? Thank you very much, John. Moving on to the consent agenda, items two through seven. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Zingheim?
Second.
Alderman Berquist? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item number eight, public hearing regarding weights and measure assessments. Clerk, can you explain to us what that's about?
Yeah, weights and measures is a license that business owners have to take out through the clerk's department, and essentially, what weights and measures is, is it's their scanners, their scales, any weighing device, any liquid measuring, anything like that. And the state, we have a contract with the state that sends out an inspector, and the inspector will take a look at all these different items, and we get charged the fee, and this is the assessment where we pass that fee on to the business owners.
Okay, thank you. Since this is a public hearing, is there anyone that would like to address the council here tonight? Now is your opportunity. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Zingheim? Alderman Schmidt? Second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Now, number nine, Resolution Number 22, weights and measures assessment. Approval?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alderman Zingheim and Alderman Sternick? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. Thank you. Item number 10, consideration and possible action on Resolution Number 26, creating tax increment district number 18, approving its project plan and establishing its boundaries, City of West Bend, Wisconsin. Good evening, John.
Good evening, again, everyone. So before you- Good evening, again, everyone. So before you this evening, we will have a couple of different presentations regarding tax increment district number eighteen, or the potential for it. This is essentially two sets of properties along Roscoe Road between River and Main Street. There's two approximately thirty-three and thirty acres towards Main Street, and about a hundred acres towards River. It's a mixed-use district, and we're gonna have a presentation by Phil. He'll walk you through the project plan. And then we'll hear from Christian from EDWC, as well as Deb from the county with regard to next-gen housing. This has been something that the three of us, actually, the four of us, have been working on for the last few months, along with two developers. So after the three presentations, then we'll have some time for questions and those types of things. So I'm gonna turn it over to Phil. He will walk you through the project plan, which I believe begins on page... Correct, fifty-two of your packet.
Thank you, John. You're not done with me yet, so. I'm gonna maybe start by just a little information for the newer council members that haven't been through the amount of TIF work that a lot of others have. The process is, is really spelled out very clearly by the state statutes that we have to go through to create a district and/or amend a district. So if you go to, and when I'm scrolling, are you seeing that as well? No? Okay.
My apologies, sorry.
Does everybody have it on their computer?
Yeah, we have it on our, we can see it.
Okay, we could, we can move forward that way. That's okay. Trust me, no one will ever claim that I'm the IT expert, so. All right, I'll start, and if we, we get it to work, that's great. So back to the process that we go through to create a district. If you look at page... Sorry. Page fifty-three of the project plan, that kind of gives you a snapshot of... There's a lot going on here. All right, you want me to click on this, I assume?
There we go.
All right. Okay, so on, back to page fifty-three. Top of the page are some key dates. I just want to walk through those really quick so you understand process-wise what, where we are. So we were contracted, Ellers was, to put together the project plan, and we started working on that, obviously, months before these dates that are here. Then the first meeting really is an organizational meeting of what's called the Joint Review Board. Joint Review Board is a representative from the school, county, technical college, the city, and then a citizen member. So that five-member board is called the Joint Review Board, and they have final say as to whether or not the TID will be created. Also, that day, later that evening, there was a public hearing that was held by Plan Commission. The only public hearing that is held when you create and/or amend a TIF district is Plan Commission. They hold the public hearing. That was held on July first. To my knowledge, I wasn't here that night, but John Cameron from our office was. There was, nobody opposed to this tax increment district attending. Plan Commission approved it on July first, and then that's the first approval. Then it comes back to the City Council, which is tonight's action on August fourth. If, if you approve it tonight, it'll go to the Joint Review Board, that, that five-member group again for final action scheduled right now for August eighteenth. So procedurally, that's the process to approve a TIF. Once that's done, everything gets filed with the Department of Revenue, and then they have to certify it to make sure that everything was done correctly through the process. So that, that's the process that we're following. We are, I'll say, about halfway through the process, with approvals tonight being really a key date in this process. So I have an executive summary I'm gonna walk through, and this is the first, the first time, and probably not the last time you're gonna hear me say this. Tax increment financing is really a financing tool. It's a way to capture potential new development, taxes on new development, to reinvest into an area. It's not the final agreement with these developers. There will be a development agreement required, because there are incentives that are gonna be provided in this project plan to these developers. By statute, you're required to have a development agreement with both developers, the industrial developer, F Street and Keller, and the residential developer, Scott Simpson. They, you're required, and that will dictate ultimately the final structure of the financing and structure of the deal, if you will. So that'll come in front of you after the fact, after the TIF is put in place. But this is a necessary step to be able to capture revenue, to be able to pay for those public costs that we're talking about, that are gonna be needed to be provided to these different developers for this development. As John alluded to, we had, this is what's gonna be called a mixed-use tax increment district. They can stay open for twenty years. That's the maximum life of a mixed-use TIF district. It's a hundred and sixty-four acres after we subtract out twelve-point-eight acres of wetland. You can keep wetland in a TIF district. You just don't count the acreage as part of the calculations. The purpose here is to pay for infrastructure costs. We're gonna spend a little bit of time talking capital projects and a little bit infrastructure costs needed for both sides of development to happen. Housing, you'll hear about next-gen housing in this area in a little bit from county and EDWC's reps, and the industrial side as well. So again, the combination. What we're looking to finance is really street projects, roundabout, lift station, and development incentives. And we'll get into more detail on each of those in a little bit. The costs of the projects right now are scheduled for about thirty-one-point-four million. Now, that's not just public costs, but we also need to identify, if you're borrowing money, how much interest will we borrow. You can tell, they're all estimates. We don't know where interest rates are gonna be when you borrow the money, but we have to put an estimate in of what the costs are gonna be, what administrative costs will be, finance costs, all those kind of things have to be identified, and they're all part of that thirty-one-point-four million. Some of the keys here are seven-point-seven million reconstruction of Roscoe Road, the roundabout, which will occur at Roscoe and River, and a small lift station project, and the rest will really be a development incentives as well. Still on page fifty-four, you'll see incremental value of projected about a hundred-and-eighty million dollars from the two different developments, the industrial and the residential that will occur. And we are expecting it'll likely take the full twenty years to be able to pay this back due to the level of financial support needed for each of these projects to move forward. The, we have maps, a variety of maps that are in here that are required by statute. So if you go down to page fifty-eight in the project plan, this is a boundary map showing the different parcels that will be located within the tax increment district. This district boundary can be amended up to four times, so this is not a one-shot deal. You gotta get it all right this time. You have the ability to amend the boundaries of the district four times. And then you also have the ability to amend projects. So if there's other things that come up along the way that weren't thought of back in twenty-five, you have the ability to amend the projects along the way as well. We have an existing current zoning map that has been identified on page sixty. Again, you can see most of this is farmland, but we'll have industrial and residential both within this tax increment district. We have a boundary map in here, I'm sorry, a parcel map, parcel list in here of all the parcels that are being included. And the base value, what is there today, will always be shared with all the taxing bodies. So whatever tax there is being generated in the, on the properties, in the boundaries, gets shared with the school, county, technical college, and then the, anything that is built and new taxes generated from that is increment. And that'll stay entirely with the city to reinvest back in to this area. One of the requirements on page number sixty-three is to show a couple of things. One, because we are including newly-planted residential, it can't be more than thirty-five percent of the area by acres, and it has to have a minimum of three units per acre or greater. So when you think about what they are trying to accomplish, they being those that established the legislature and the TID law, essentially what they're trying to do is create a little more dense developments and not have kind of more sprawl, one-acre, three-acre lots. They didn't see the need for that type of lot and that type of development being assisted. So these are intended to be more dense developments. So in this calculation, you'll see minus the wetlands in here, that we're looking at about thirty percent of this being newly-planted residential. Once we remove the public infrastructure components, the roads, water, sewer, stormwater, essentially that is needed to serve that area. And we're looking at three-hundred-and-fifteen units of housing at about six-point-three-two acres, six-point-three units per acre. There is open space in this area. There's wetlands, so it may not feel that dense once it's finally completed. One chart that needs to be updated as of August fifteenth, and we'll, we'll come back with final numbers, is your equalized value chart. You can't exceed twelve percent of the total value of the city and create new districts. Right now, I just looked today, you're at about eleven point, I think it was eleven-point-three percent, based on preliminary numbers from the DOR that came out on Friday. You're still under that twelve percent threshold, meaning you can proceed with this project. But you're up against that twelve percent test pretty soon, and as a result of that, you could be what's called tipped out. Once they're over twelve percent, you can't create new districts, and you can't change the boundaries of existing districts. So we'll analyze that. We're constantly in contact with, with staff to make sure that they are comfortable with where, where you stand under that twelve percent test. If you go down to page number, page number seventy, page number seventy, you'll see that we've identified, highlighted three different projects that are outside the district, but still going to be paid by the tax increment district. And they're really just pieces of the, of the puzzle here that we're looking at. So the lift station is just outside of this area. It's fifteen thousand dollars. It's relatively small, but it's just outside the boundaries. Roscoe Road, the east and west segments, the finish-up the road, are about a million dollars that will be paid, even though they're outside the boundaries, they're still gonna be paid by the tax increment district. And then finally, the roundabout is outside the boundaries of the district, but it will serve this area as well, and that's within a half-mile, will be paid by the tax increment district as well. So specifically, we have to identify those as being outside the boundaries, but also available. The, we have a variety of other maps. We have a land use map that, on page number seventy-two, seventy-three, we show the location of the capital projects that are gonna be financed. You can see the lift station on the bottom of the page, the Roscoe Road and River Road, roundabout on the very northeast side of, of this tax increment district, and then Roscoe Road. Those are the main projects. You also have some development incentives that are gonna be provided as incentive for these developments to occur within their sites. So those are all identified on that map. On page seventy-four is a map showing whether or not the projects I just described fit under the half-mile radius. Obviously, they do, but we have to show that in a map as well. So the project costs are pretty extensive, as I mentioned. And on page number seventy-five is the project cost list. You can see the ones I have talked about already, Roscoe Road, the roundabout, the lift station. But then we have a variety of other incentives that we have built into this project plan as well. And the intent behind these are really to provide incentive to the industrial developer and the residential developer. This is where, best estimates at this point, we know the deal is gonna be modified as discussions continue between the city, the developers, Washington County, EDWC. So we, there's a lot of players in the room. I think right now, we're, we're all kind of heading in the same direction, but we know there'll be tweaks to this when it comes in front of you in a, in a final development agreement. It will look a little bit different than this. What we are proposing right now is, and we'll talk about this when, when Christian and Deb come up, is that there's about six-point-eight million through the county impact, next-gen housing impact fund, and also the next-gen housing fund. That will go to the residential component. There's a piece of it also that we've identified as pay-as-you-go, meaning once the debt is paid and the county is paid back, that if there is excess increment, a portion of that increment will go back to the developer to help pay for the internal infrastructure costs that they have. So their infrastructure costs are much higher than what we're showing here, but the idea here is that we're gonna contribute through the TIF some funds to help pay for some of that infrastructure, so that they can drive down the overall cost of housing and, and make those projects viable. Also, we have a pay-go incentive in here, similar set situation with the industrial developer. They earn back essentially a portion of the increment they generate from new industrial development that they bring to the city. So those numbers are, are defined in here, but again, we know they're gonna be modified through the final agreement as well. So the key assumptions in here are, they're pretty substantial. Three-hundred-and-fifteen housing units. We work collectively with the county, EDWC, and the city to make sure that the mix makes sense for the next-gen housing. We've kind of summarized what this all looks like in a couple of line items. We have townhomes, we have single-family, et cetera. But in reality, there's some more nuance to this. I just kind of combined them. But that three-hundred-and-fifteen units generates about a hundred, three-hundred, four-million dollars of new taxable development. The rest of the development will come from industrial over time. That'll be done by F Street and Keller. So we have a layout of the development assumptions as they stand right now. The developer on the residential side came back with more aggressive numbers than this. I think through a different negotiation and discussion, we've been, we've come to an agreement to kind of be a little more conservative in the build-out of that, which does impact revenue to the tax increment district, but it's a little more conservative assumption along the way. We have identified the tax increment on the next page that would be generated from this project. It's substantial. Thirty-seven million dollars of future increment that would come in due to- due to both the industrial and the residential development. You know, I've used two key assumptions in here. One is a flat tax rate, which is not what's happening these days. Property values have been increasing substantially. At the same time, the city lives under levy limits, like every other city and municipality in the state of Wisconsin, where you can't increase your budget beyond net new construction. There's a mix, there's a mismatch there. So what's happened over the last four to five years is we've seen a drop in the overall tax rates. Now, doesn't mean automatically your tax rates, your tax bills are going down because your assessments are going up, the tax rates are dropping, and we're getting back to the same place almost. But from a TIF district, the overall equalized tax rate is a key assumption in here. We have it flat. And the reason we have it flat is because we're not showing any property appreciation in here. And the reason I'm not showing property appreciation, I expect the residential to increase in value. The industrial may be kind of flat over time. So I think this all kind of offsets each other on the key assumptions that we've been using as part of this model. We have a finance plan starting on page 30, which really looks at monies that would have to be borrowed versus monies that would be earned. So borrowed funds by the city would be that first line item called general obligation promissory notes that finances Rusko Road, the roundabout, and the lift station. Those are funds that would be borrowed by the city. You would have really first pledge of revenue on those, of revenue coming from the TIF district to pay back those, that obligation. Under what I call bank note, that's really money that's coming from the county Next Gen Housing Project. There's the two tranches. There's the impact fee or the impact fund, and then also the Next Gen Housing Fund. That's that 6.8 million. Under what's called municipal revenue obligations, that is what has to be earned back by the different developers. The 2.5 million coming to the housing component of the development and roughly 9 million being earned back on the industrial side. And there are some significant discussion around the amount of incentive. One, we have to make sure the whole thing cash flows. So I'll show you that in a little bit. That overrides everything else. But two, the city's had a past practice, not a policy, but a practice over the last number of years, to kind of treat all developers the same. And so you have had a variety of different housing developments that have come forward throughout the city in the last decade. And you've had a policy, or sort of a practice, of essentially paying out no more, no more than around 12% of the value being created in the way of an incentive. And that, that incentive be used for infrastructure. Could be internal infrastructure or external infrastructure. We've tried to live to that here as well. Even though it's not a policy, it's been a past practice in the city. And we think it's just kind of fundamentally treats everybody kind of the same that comes in the door. What's a little bit different here is that the housing being proposed here is Next Gen Housing, somewhat what I'll call the cost-driven down, that doesn't generate quite as much revenue, which may need a little more support because of that. But it serves the need in the city for a certain housing price point for individuals that come into the city. So we've tried to live to those. That's how we got to those numbers throughout this TID plan. We did a cash flow on the Next Gen Housing on page number 83 and 84 on the overall tax increment district. And you can see they get relatively tight in both cases. So we don't have a lot of room in here to offer much of anything else to them. Now, if development happens faster, properties appreciate, you'll have more revenue. If development lags and/or if you have a situation where tax rates drop a lot more, this could, this could fall a little bit short. So we try to be a little bit conservative in our assumptions in how this was structured in the overall TIF district. But here, we are, we want to make sure that what we bring forward at least cash flows on paper. The development agreements that'll be struck will actually be the overrider of, and then we'll build out models based on what was ultimately agreed upon with both developers. Section 10, annexed properties. Some of this property has been annexed in the last three years. So in that situation, the town of West Bend, you pay the town of West Bend the town tax for five years. It's farmland, farmland assessed. There's very little value there. The payment is due by statute, but it's, if I recall, John, total is like 5,000, in that range. So it's relatively small, and that, that's a total for the five years. So it's, it's a, when you, when you're talking about the numbers, we are. It's a small little blip, but it's got to be acknowledged and identified. We don't expect retail to be built in, in this, in this area. Obviously, this area will have to be rezoned as well. So that's part on, in section 12. We know there'll be rezoning that will happen to allow for these developments to occur. We're not expecting anybody to be relocated as a result of this TIF. That's section 13. Section 14, this, you know, is going to create housing and job opportunities over time. So we think that fits. And then finally, we have a legal opinion from the city attorney who does a review of the project plan to make sure that all the statutory requirements are met in the project plan. His review isn't so much about, does this, each deal make sense financially? That's not really the review is, is, the review is, do we meet, hit all the elements that are required in the project plan? Your city attorney will be in the middle of those development agreements later on when we start having those discussions. So that's a review of the project plan. I don't know if we want to take questions after. Maybe I'll turn it over to Christian, who will come up next and talk about the Next Gen Housing and the county's involvement as well. Then we'll come, circle back with questions, if that's okay.
Good evening. John is handing out a paper copy of what I'll be speaking to with you today. First of all, I'm Christian Cheshlock, CEO with EDWC. We're your development corporation serving municipalities across Washington County as well as our corporate community. Our mission is fueling growth companies for the creation of economic prosperity and prosperous lives countywide. First of all, thank you so much for being a subscriber to EDWC. As a subscribing community, one of your benefits is to take advantage of, of some of the expertise and the analysis tools that we have to offer. Many of our municipalities regularly take advantage of this particular tool. But since this is the first time that I'm in front of you, I believe, with an economic and fiscal impact analysis, I thought I'd take just a minute or two to explain kind of what's underneath that. Numbers are only as valuable as the assumptions that go into them, right? And, and how the tool works. Unlike many other fiscal and economic impact analysis tools that are based strictly upon multipliers and some general assumptions, this particular tool was built on contract with EDWC for Washington County and its municipalities. What that means is, is in addition to using actual and current tax rates, we are also building into it actual budget figures that you file with the Department of Revenue, cost figures for your utilities. These are real, real-time information that's utilized. The assumptions are built out both from the standpoint of an economist who advises us on these, on the use of this tool, as well as EDWC and our knowledge of, of the projects. This particular analysis is limited to the residential component of this particular project. So what does it include? It includes the residential development itself, the incentives that are involved with this particular project plan, as well as TID 18 and its impacts, as well as fiscal implications. The reason we are, we, we do this analysis is because, like you, we have a strong philosophy that anytime the public participates in development activities, we're really watching out for the, the taxpayer and a return on investment for the taxpayer. So every single deal that EDWC participates in is analyzed through this tool, and that is a standard expectation. So given that, we wanted to make sure that you had the fruits of this particular analysis here. I'll start at, at the top, which talks about the residential impact itself. Phil had mentioned the 315 single-family units. I'd like to point out, right below that, we note that of those, we're anticipating approximately 167 new households stand to move into West Bend. That is based on current experience with housing developments that are within the Next Gen Housing portfolio, as well as EDWC's own experience with developers that are operating in the price points that this particular residential development contemplates. That's important to West Bend because in addition to that, that helps boost our, our school enrollments with 139 estimated new students and 425 new residents to the community. As you can imagine, that has tons of potential spillover impacts with individuals shopping in our communities, doing business in our communities. So that's a huge positive, and that's something that we wanted to make sure we put some understanding to and numbers to. Below that, you'll see more of a fiscal impact. What we mean by that is, in addition to the economics that we talk about above, this is the direct fiscal bottom line that is coming to the various taxing bodies. In that chart, you will see essentially five columns. West Bend, for West Bend, because there is a TID 18 column, you're actually taking two columns here. The city of West Bend column and the TID are really what represents the West Bend take of this project, if you will. And then, of course, you've got a, a total column there as well. What I'd like to do then is to draw your attention down to the bottom where it says incentives, that bottom row effectively. You'll notice some of the incentives that Phil had mentioned in his TID plan. And there's a tie-out for those incentives that goes to the county's portion of this particular deal in this project. And where you'll see that tie-out is in the, in the bar chart all the way at the top, which is years one through five. You'll notice at, at that bar chart, that's the chart that's just below net benefits, and that benefits less incentives. You'll see that there's a zero line, and that represents revenue coming above and below. And you'll see, so there are some costs as well as incentives that are packaged into that. And then you'll see the revenue, excuse me, above, and then the cost below. The revenue above that is primarily the tax revenue that is, is coming in along with some funding for utility or utility revenue and so on. What you'll see is that the, the net is below the line, so to speak. And the reason for that is because in those first few years, part of the partnership of the way that these incentives are collaborating is right when the developer needs it, rather than the municipality taking that risk essentially. Washington County and EDWC are taking that risk so that the developer gets those funds when they need it to build out that infrastructure with a payback coming through the TID. And you can see then, as the TID revenue starts to kick in, as those units are built, we start to go into the positive and then, and then regularly stay there. That is by design, that is understood, that is something we expect. And that's, you know, demonstrative of the importance and the need for that, that collaboration because we're in a position to be able to, to offer those funds when the developer requires. Yet you're in the position to be able to manage a TIF district, which allows for that payback. So it's kind of generating a win-win, exposing the risk where, where folks are comfortable taking it on. As part of that, we, of course, would underwrite the developer as well as, as your own underwriting and your own development agreement down the road. But needless to say, that, again, that represents kind of that best-case partnership, if you will. Now let's talk about what, what that ROI takes, takes a look, or, excuse me, looks like. And we'll start with the fact that when you look at those incentives, again, coming back down to that bottom line, you'll see a payback period. If you recall from what Phil had mentioned, the TID has a 20-year life to it. So you certainly don't want a payback period that is over 20 years. That would not make sense. But you want a payback period that's actually quite a bit less than that. And you'll see both, in the case of the TID and the county, we have a payback period that's under 15 years and collectively are in aggregate, that's really under 14 years, which is, or just right near 14 years, which is, which is great. That's a, that's a good number. That's something we like to see. While there isn't a ton of cash flow cushion in the TID, there is, there is opportunity to manage to that, is what that's telling us effectively. The next area to look at is the, the net benefits. So the way to think about net benefits is you take all of the revenues and the benefits of those revenues that are coming in and subtract out those costs. And that's going to generate either a net positive benefit or a net drag or a net cost. And you'll see that the net benefits number is substantial. And, and Phil also alluded to that in his presentation, that even when you take into account the expenses associated with serving the, the residents in this particular development, you still have a, a strong net positive benefit to all of our taxing bodies and, and the community as a whole. I would like to point out that benefit does not include, again, as I mentioned, this is residential only, so it does not include the benefits coming from the industrial development. It also doesn't include a factor in for those extraterritorial infrastructure expenses that, that Phil had mentioned. What it does is it shows you, you've got capacity to take those on, is really what that represents. We did not want to pollute this development analysis with some of those additional infrastructure pieces, so we left those out. But obviously, there's plenty of capacity to take those on here. What we look at is an even more important number, though, is the net benefits after incentives because that's really the true net value coming back to our communities. And in this case, you can see that's over 15 million in total. For the TID itself, it's at 10.3 based on our, our estimates and our, our analyses and the assumptions that we used. Which, by the way-
Excuse me for a second.
Sure.
Sorry to interrupt. When you're, you're referencing all this stuff, could you point to a line or a section or something like that? It's, you're, I'm, I'm having a hard time following you.
Sure. And, let's see, if I use this, does it work? Can you see what I'm pointing to here?
I can use the mouse, too.
Okay.
The mouse will give you-
There we go. Can you see that? Thank you. So, thank you for letting me know that. I wasn't aware. So when I was talking about the bar chart earlier, this is the area that I was referencing, this particular chart right here. And again, you can see in those front ears where, where our participation is, is critical and noted. And then how that is obviously adjusting over time as the revenue comes in. The bottom-line figures that I was talking about is right down here in this incentives line, these incentive line items. And there you can see the payback periods that I was referencing, as well as the different incentive values that are associated with that. When I talk about the net benefits, we're talking about these numbers right here in the upper right corner of the table. That 35.1 million is, is just raw benefit. If you were to subtract out the value of the incentives, you're, you're left with about 15.2. Again, for a project of this size and this nature, that is a substantial number. Even if you were to present value that, and for those who are maybe less familiar with what we mean by present value, it's basically saying, if we were to assume an interest rate, in this case, 4.5%, how much could we, and we knew that this was coming in as revenue, what could be, how much could we borrow? And based on those assumptions, you'd be looking at about 6.8 million dollars worth of borrowing you could do today just on that net benefit, which is, obviously, that's, that's substantial. So just a couple of different ways to, to slice that. Used to touch screen, but I'm not sure we got that one here. If we go to the next page, this is where we'll get into a little bit more detail regarding TID 18 itself. I don't want to repeat what we, what we've already pointed out here, but just a couple of additional nuggets. One, you'll see the total benefit amount that we're projecting, which is limited to the TID, that's pretty much property tax revenue, is 23 point, not quite 23.5. You might, if you were able to compare numbers between that and the TID plan, you'll see that we're projecting a little bit more. And that's a, a sign that, as AILers should be, they're, they're more conservative in their plan. We're a little bit more aggressive, reflecting what we see as potential market conditions, including assuming in the case of the residential- what we see as potential market conditions, including assuming, in the case of the residential, since that's what we're focused in on here, a 2% appreciation rate is what we factored in, which is still pretty conservative. But, in effect, the market has been way over 2% for quite some time now. But needless to say, we just wanted to reflect that additional continuum for you. So that's why you see the 23.5. And then, a little bit lower, again, you'll see the full incentive value. That is inclusive of the payback of the upfront NGH funds, the upfront impact funds that Phil had spoken about, as well as what we anticipate the remaining pay-go after those are taken care of. That would be accrueable to the developer. And last but not least, flipping on the third page here, this is really a summary, kind of going back to, again, that data-driven decision-making, a summary of what we and you and your own household, as you look at making potential investments, would like to look at. And that's, if we're going to invest these resources, and that's really what an incentive represents, it's an investment of resources with an expectation of return. And that expectation that we're anticipating here, or what our numbers are telling us as we look at the reality of the development, is about a 9.9% rate of return, which is, if you think about some of your other investments that the city makes, that's not too shabby at all. That's very respectable. It's also not super-aggressive. There's, you know, nobody's getting rich off of this particular development here. This is a very reasonable rate of return, and something that we would expect to see in a development like this. So with that, I think, as we talked about earlier, we're going to take questions collectively at the end. I'm going to go ahead and have Deb come on up here from Washington County to speak about Next Generation Housing. Thank you so much.
Good evening. I'm Deb Silskin, the Community Development Director for Washington County. John asked me to give a brief presentation on Next Generation Housing. We do have an 80-page framework that goes, dives into a lot of detail on our website, if you're interested in getting more detailed information about the Next Gen Housing Program. But I'll certainly keep this to just a couple of minutes. So, for Washington County, our goal is to work with developers to build 1,000 new owner-occupied dwelling units, called our Next Gen Housing Program, by the year 2032. And it's really to fill that missing middle of income, that's your working families, your police officers, your teachers, that want to live in the community in which they work. So we are providing framework for developers in exchange for funding to accomplish this. We do have some price point parameters. For every development, we require that 40% of those units, and they could be single-family, duplexes, condos, townhomes, they just have to be owner-occupied. So no rental, so it could be single-family, and it can be multifamily, but it just has to be owner-occupied. So our price point, 40% of any given development needs to have a sale price of under $340,000. For the example that we've been talking about with the 315 units, that's 126 of those units would sell for under $340,000. And then, our next price point is $360,000. So another 126 units, 40%, would have to sell for under $360,000. And then, the remaining needs to sell for under $420,000. So it's 40%, 40%, 20%, everything under $420,000. That is the requirement to utilize Next Gen Housing Funds. And how this is accomplished is two different ways. The fund allows for essentially a 0% loan, our standard way that we work with developers, is essentially a 0% loan provided to the developer at $20,000 per owner-occupied unit. Those funds are eligible to be used for land acquisition, infrastructure development, engineering, planning, basically the whole scope of development from start to finish. A lien is put on the property for that $20,000 per owner-occupied, and then, once the builder has constructed the home and it closes, then the lien is satisfied, and $20,000 is paid back to Washington County and put back into the Next Gen Housing Fund to be used. It essentially is a revolving loan, and it goes back to the Next Gen Housing Fund to be used for other developments. So that is one way that we work with developers on Next Gen Housing projects. The second way, which is what you've been hearing today, is utilization of TID increment. So we still provide the developer $20,000 per owner-occupied, and then the increment pays that back, plus some minor interest. This typically happens through the process of the builder obtaining a building permit, and it is phased, and then the county would provide the developer with that chunk of funds that they have acquired building permits for. So it's a phased approach. So those are the two main ways that we work with the developers with the $20,000 per owner-occupied, and it's one or the other process. Another funny mechanism we have is the permit fee. We do provide $6,000 per owner-occupied dwelling unit to be applied to permits. This $6,000 is paid directly to the municipality to offset the cost of those permits. There are limitations to what permits are eligible. It has to be for the safe and material construction of the home. So such fees, like the park impact fee, would not be eligible for that. One of the main components of Next Gen Housing, as I mentioned, is the owner occupancy. And what we do require is that, in the development of covenants, let's say, a condo HOA or a homeowners association, the requirement for a owner occupancy needs to be written into, and we have standard language that we provide to the developers, so they can add that language into their covenants before they're recorded, to make sure that those homes are owner-occupied in perpetuity. We do have some other requirements for the builders. We do have a list of 16 quality building requirements. I'm not going to go through all those today. That is in our framework document online. The other important piece of Next Gen Housing is that we want to provide equal opportunity for anyone in the community or outside the community to purchase our homes. So our requirement of Next Gen Housing is that the developer needs to list every single home on MLS. And we also have a series of disclosures that are provided on that listing for the home buyer, so they fully understand the mechanisms that are being used for Next Generation Housing. So that is a very quick, high-level overview of Next Gen Housing, and I think we're going to open it up for questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions?
Yes, I've got one.
Colloquial turn.
Sorry. The question comes up, you mentioned that, as we're looking at this, where the county provides the loan to the developer, as part of then, the increment is being used to pay back to county. Am I following that correctly? You mentioned that there's a small amount of interest. How much is that interest that we are paying back to the county as a part of that program?
The TID plan has it set for 5%.
It comes out to roughly 3 million.
Yeah, but just, I'll add to that a little bit. You know, the final structure of this will probably still move, but the county's been really good to work with on kind of delaying the first interest payment for a period of time. So there's a deferral in here as well, which helps the overall TID cash flow, because as homes build out over the first couple of years, we won't see revenue for two years. So we're working with the county and EDWC and putting together a structure that really works within the TID framework as well. So we have a couple-year deferral on the interest and then the principal a little bit longer than that. So it's, again, we're collaboratively working through those issues.
Great. Thank you.
Anyone else? Does anyone else have a question?
I've spent quite a bit of time on this, just personally, and I know I've spent some time on the phone with John, just asking a whole bunch of questions. And the more I ask questions, the more questions come up in my mind. And I don't know that I'm prepared to cast a vote on this this evening without having a little bit more time to go over this stuff. You guys all understand this stuff? I mean, it's new to me. And on its face, it seems like a great, great deal. I would just love to spend more time on this. And maybe postpone this until the next meeting. In fact, I make a motion to do that. Was, let's say?
You don't have a motion.
Oh, yeah. But what, Phil, what does that do to the timelines? Just so you-
At this point, it would just require us to reschedule the final joint review board. As long as, and I'm not trying to define the timeline, you vote on it when you're comfortable. We would like to have this be a 2025 tax increment district, which means you need to have final vote by council no later than September 30th. So we have a little bit of time in here, if need be. But we'd have to move out the final GRB meeting. That's not an issue. We haven't provided any kind of legal notice for that meeting at this point, so it's easy to do. From a negotiation with the developer, I don't think it'll harm that at all. We're still in negotiations with the developers.
Not trying to be a burden of the saddle. I just want to make a good decision here, and I just don't feel entirely comfortable with everything that I've got in front of me.
Yeah, I mean, I believe the next city council meeting is the 18th, so we had thought about the joint review board that week, so we could certainly have city council the 18th and see if they're free later in that week, or the following week.
Okay. Anybody else?
I do have another question, Phil, just on the 12%. The idea of being titted out, right? The idea being, as we look at all of our TIDs right now, we are looking at closing a number of those over the next probably three-year time horizon. That puts us back into a position where that number comes down from being on the verge of 12%, correct?
Yeah, you're in a, even with this new district, you still have capacity to create a district or districts until the new valuations come out next August.
Okay.
So you have a window yet.
Yep.
And even if you're over at that point, you're right, we are looking at, in a year or two, maybe three, closing out several districts, because they've either hit their maximum life, or, in all the cases that I'm thinking of, we have collected enough revenue to pay them off.
Right.
So I think we had targeted around 28, 29 for a couple of closures.
Thank you. And there would be some flexibility with, like, environmental TIDs for certain situations as well. The hurdles for those are significant, but in certain notable cases, they might qualify.
And just to clarify, too, we have one district that's eligible to close, will probably be coming to you early next year. We want to get it through one more cycle to have it cash flow in the positive. So we're going to probably come next spring, and then we go through that closure process. So that one's quite early on the horizon. You could extend it if you wanted to for one more year, but that can be a discussion in six months or so.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to move this to next meeting, August 18th? August 18th?
Yeah, there's a second.
Okay. And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Colloquial sign. Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Polls?
Aye.
Okay. Let's do a roll call.
Well, first, is there any discussion on that motion before we're voting on it?
Anyone have a discussion on that motion before we move?
I pretty much laid out my comments as to motivation behind that.
Understood. The point is, nobody else had a chance to comment on the motion that was set forth on the table.
Yep.
And I'm simply asking that opportunity.
Does anyone have any comments?
I was just going to mention, I don't expect to be present on the 18th, so I wouldn't be able to vote on the 18th, is I guess what I would say.
Okay. Anyone? John?
I think the plan's laid out, and it was there. The numbers are good. I don't have a problem with it, so I feel we could do this.
Okay, let's do a roll call, please. Alderman, Brett, Engelking?
This is the motion to delay. So yes, or a yes would be to delay to next meeting, no would be to vote, to consider it immediately.
Sorry, do we have a sense of, like, when would be, so far, delayed that it would be too, like-
That was what, yep, that's what Phil had commented on. We need to act by September 30th. There is cushion still.
Okay.
The motion was fairly simple, just delay. I assume it was till the next meeting. It didn't have a date specific, so-
Yeah. I guess I personally favor either doing today or the next two meetings, or delaying two meetings, I guess, is my position.
So your answer is?
No to next meeting.
Next meeting. Okay, thank you. Alderman Berquist?
No.
Okay. Alderman Sternig?
Yes.
Alderman Seizer?
No.
Alderman Spate?
Spate.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Singsheim?
Yes.
And, no.
So then, one, two, three, four, five no's. So, yeah, five to three.
Okay. So we have to make a motion.
Yep, so then there needs to be a motion.
A motion to approve the resolution. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Alderman Berquist, second?
I'll second.
Alderman Spate, Sparks? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Polls?
No.
Seven to one. Okay. Motion has been approved. Okay, item number 11, Resolution Number 25 authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed $20,200,000 general obligation promising note series 2025B.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Motion carried. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Christian. Thank you very much, John, Phil, and Debbie. Thank you. Our administrators report. Chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. Normally, I just kind of speak off the cuff for this report, but I did put together a quick PowerPoint for a couple of reasons. One, I have been talking to you fairly regularly, but in very general terms, about our budget preparation discussions. These are just notes. I emailed you this slide deck at about 6 o'clock, so you'll have these notes when you get back. And just wanted to, for two reasons, one, to formalize our discussion on where your department head team is on preparing the 2026 budget and some action steps. Plant some seeds in your head, start to lay out the course of our, going to be some difficult conversations as we move forward in the next couple of months. And then, second, to memorialize those conversations, so we can help Jesse as he onboards next week. It'll be a great, it'll be a bit of a challenge, work coming into budget season, but actually, I view it as a great opportunity for him to become immersed in the department head team and West Bend and our process. What better way than through a budget document, which really is a documentation of- What better way than through a budget document, which really is a documentation of what our vision is for moving forward. So hopefully, there we go, just, and I realize the time, and I realize the amount of information you've all processed tonight, so we'll move fairly quickly, and again, about a 30,000-foot overview of the process moving forward. I expect, I am not here to justify or speak towards any specifics, those conversations will be had with your department head team moving forward. But our goals, and they really do focus around continuing to provide the services that our citizens expect, deserve, and deserve, continue to address the infrastructure needs, and I don't know if we think we lost it, we're back, it's all right. I think I might have screwed up the whole thing early on by putting the cop in charge of AV, that might have been the problem. Yes, yeah, right, a second. No, I'm just kidding. Continue to address the infrastructure needs, which our citizens have spoke loudly and clearly, equal road repair and maintenance as a priority. Continue to invest in your team and the equipment and infrastructure, they need to provide those services and infrastructure. What a great way to segue from the conversation we just had, to continue to invest in the quality of life and economic well-being of our city, to make sure that we're providing for new business development, land use, effective land use, and housing opportunities. A big asterisk that's there, even though the funding we just approved for Fire Station 1 has been met, and we're moving forward on that, it does have an impact on your future taxing and funding options as we move forward. That's alone there, it's good that we acknowledge that. And of course, Kerry would be mad if I didn't add as a goal, we'll continue to pursue, it would be, next year would be, I believe, the ninth year running straight of the GFOA Government Finance Officers Association Budget Award, which we are very proud that we continue to earn. Potential issues that you're going to face, the dark store lawsuit issue continues, although in the next slide, I'm going to show you that we're well on our way to getting that in hand. Significant infrastructure needs in both road construction, the PCI, the Paver Condition Index rating, that we remember the county plan that we heard about within the past year, certain needs and city building maintenance issues, a lot of HVAC and structural system issues that have to be addressed at some point. We have some deferred staffing needs that you're going to see in front of you this next session to talk about what is our priority and what's needed. Capital Improvement Plan, I'm sure you're aware of this, but every single year of our five-year plan, there is always a tremendous amount more needs than we have the revenue to fund. So your department head team, along with Jesse's guidance, are really going to have to dig down and find out what's our priority to fund in 2026. My speak is the needs are greater than the revenue, which is classic, that's in our homes, in our personal lives, and also in our city. So that equals we'll have to find out prioritization. So that'll be the focus as we move forward. Good news on the dark store issue, thanks greatly in part to Jeff Yoder, his team, and our legal team, thank you, Ian, and our partners, we've really worked on settling quite a few of these. Walmart has been settled, so 2025, slight assessment change, but that also equaled the withdrawal of all lawsuits going back to 2017. Freighter, 5% change, all lawsuits withdrawn going back to 2020, that's great news. We continue to have Fleet Farm, Cedar Community, and Arbor Trace out there. If you want more information on that, I really suggest strongly, Jeff has a passion and just a very thorough knowledge of those issues, get in touch with Jeff, he can walk you through that.
I had one thing about that.
Yeah.
So one thing, and I know border review generally kind of skirts below a lot of people's radar, we've really focused on, like, we adopted new rules last year, we updated them this year, that really focus on requiring the, you know, organization or the taxpayers who are objecting, especially based on the dark store, to specify and follow the procedures that they're supposed to follow in the statutes. So a lot of them, especially last year, a lot of them were dismissed because they didn't comply, same with Fleet Farm this year. So I mean, the, we have very, we've taken a very aggressive posture in trying to hold everybody to the letter of the law when they are objecting, so that we kind of nip that in the bud. The Cedar Community and Arbor Trace are different, those aren't dark store ones, those aren't valuation cases, those are a little different, but we've been very aggressive and, you know, kind of shifting the burden back to the taxpayer to provide the information to the assessors so that they can accurately assess the properties and to follow the rules at border review.
Great, thanks, Ian, appreciate it, and absolutely correct, Cedar Community, Arbor Trace, not, but still under that lawsuit piece. Tax incremental districts, well, I think we heard quite a bit about that tonight, but it's important to know that those funding pieces are still out there, including the developer shortfall. In 2026, our budget, our borrowing for the TIDS is actually fairly limited, it's around, it's not around, it's $201,666 to be exact, but in 2027, there'll be significant borrowing, closing in on the $7 million mark, and now with 18, maybe additional more. So that's important to understand, all of our expenses. So let's talk, city infrastructure needs, what you're really going to hear as the plan moves forward, the big one is certainly road maintenance, not just from your city team, but from our citizens, and you're all very well aware of that. City building maintenance needs, there's some substantial HVAC and structural system needs at the library, here at City Hall, you've heard the saga of our boiler being replaced and repaired and repaired and repaired, there's some significant issues there that our team is going to try to start forecasting and planning for those events, not that they haven't, of course they have, but they're going to bring that forward to you. Our downtown master plan, which you've heard a lot about, and John stepped up, but John definitely pioneering us to continue to move forward on the West Bend Airport Expansion Plan, it's a constant topic. Human resources, some good news is it looks like our healthcare costs increased, it looks to be minimum, you know that can often be a driver of our operating budget. Michelle and Jennifer working hard with our consultants to make sure that we're trying to keep that, so right now, our costs look like they'll be minimum, or maybe even stay the same. Bad news is we have had a significant risk in our risk management costs, we've had some expensive workers' comp claims, we've had the new firefighters who were added, which is just a cost of doing business, a rebound ready, trying to provide better care and get our employees back to work, reducing that workers' comp claim, but that does come with a cost. We'll be looking at completing the councils, last year you directed our team to work on a two-year initiative to move all tenured employees to market rate, this will be the second year of that, so we'll be working to follow your directive, looking at those that are at market level, employ a co-lah merit increase, a combination of those, if you're performing, looking at a 4%, which had some preliminary conversations with Mayor Ongert and Finance Chair, to see if that was something that there was an appetite for, it seemed that way, but we'll certainly have more conversations on that. And then, of course, the bargained wages, really nondiscretionary, it was bargained, brought before you and approved, and so those increases are coming. Known additional staff requests, I'll start with the bottom two first, these you were informed about and kind of gave your next-year blessing on, was the public works technician, Level 1, certainly needed, Doug's team is doing everything they can to keep up with our road repair and maintenance and those issues, and then the Parks, Rec Forestry, Parks Maintenance Position, discussed last year, moved to this year. Two new ones that you're going to be hearing, in line with John's initiative, to move towards that full-time airport program, or the airport expansion program, looking at a full-time airport manager, that's going to be, certainly be a discussion, and timeliness will be part of that component. And then the clerks, as we work through the, we have the wait and measurement meetings tonight, and all the deputy and license, or, I'm sorry, all the licensing concerns, looking at adding a deputy and licensing clerk. So four additions to staff, again, not here to justify them tonight, just here to plant the seed for you, that those will be conversations moving forward, and our team is ready and understands due diligence, understands justification, understands talking you through all that. Just some points of interest to talk about, most of our budgetary increases, I know you know this, I'm just going to point it out because I often see some aha moments as we discuss this with the public, but most of our increases are really, what I'll say, is nondiscretionary, normal inflation, contractual services, the bargain wages, those things, it's really a small piece of the budget where we get that flexibility to decide if you're running your budget correctly, which we run our budget correctly, nobody's, the time to cut out the fat was, if ever, was many years ago, and it's been done. So most of the cost increases are nondiscretionary. Some of the discretionary pieces that will be brought in front of you are, again, those staffing additions, and some additional line items that people are trying to get their, ahead of their maintenance costs, trying to keep sustainability front of mind, to maybe limit the amount of times that we'll be in a situation where the building can't be maintained anymore, like Chief Noren was confronted with and addressed through Fire Station 1. Capital Improvement Plan, like we talked about, right now, there's about $16.5 million on the needs list for our capital improvement plan, well aware we borrow $4 million, two of which are earmarked for the road, there is a, our, in next year will be a $4.7 million borrowing to finish Fire Station 1, so we've got a lot of work to do, hopefully with Jesse, Jesse's guidance to narrow that list down, and we will, and we will. But I threw that chart in there so you can see kind of historically the amount of borrowing, $4 million of that has been our normal capital budget, some of those were the extra road projects, some of that ARPA fund that we use to do more roads, TID borrowing, all included in those numbers. One thing I did want to talk about, and it's really not an element in the room, we've talked about it, we discussed it, it's important that we realize and acknowledge, it's a great move, moving towards our Fire Station 1 and that investment, that's been hashed out, but it does have an impact on our ability to fund other projects, it does. The $2.2 million that we use for land acquisition was the right thing to do, however, that also impacts what's our funds on hand, if you see that bottom column, we've always had some room, Max had some room in his budget, there's not, that pot is pretty much gone, so that we can't really count on funds on hand to bail us out, or, not to bail us out, but to use for additional pieces. So again, it just really, wanted to make sure that we're all starting our conversations on a realistic view, there's certainly our needs, certainly trust our department head team to bring those in front of you intelligently, strategically, measured, with their due diligence done, with the analysis done, justifications done, but it's important that we understand where we're at. Needs are greater than our revenue, which will equal us making priorities. So next step is we are continuing to work hard, our initial drafts are due on the 7th, I think some have been starting to be trickle-down, historically, every year we get to this point where it's due date, we're no different than every student at school, we're doing a lot of cramming at the last minute, hey, what was that account? You're going to see some neat things, I think, going on, where instead of us being separate accounts for each department, we're having a lot of conversations about maybe combining, like, some of the, just as an example, some of the IT expenses, instead of each department doling that out, having it be under IT, so you can make a more informed decision about what we're actually funding, right? If you have 5% here, 4% there, 7% there, it's hard to really get that total cost. So we're trying to strategize to make sure that our budget is really, truly, exactly what it's for, vision and transparency and decision-making. So look for that, certainly some more, certainly a lot of work on the Capital Improvement Plan, and then Michelle's working hard to finalize those final health insurance premiums. October 6th will be our formal budget presentation to you, the 20th will be our capital budgets, and then looking for November 10th to be the budget adoption. That's a short time away, but there'll be a lot of conversations, work, and justification in between that, so. See a lot of droopy eyes, I'm going to wrap that up here, you have this slide deck at home? No, no, no. You have the slide deck when you get home on your emails, please feel free to reach out to me if you have additional questions, but know that this was really just a first view, so you could plant some seeds, so you'll be ready for your conversations. And that's all for that, then just lastly in my report, I'd just like to take a quick moment to thank you, all of you, and the mayor, for giving me the opportunity, this will be my last council meeting as the interim, I want to really, truly thank you for the opportunity, I have learned a tremendous amount, I'm not going to lie, halfway through that TID conversation, I was, I was starting to think, maybe being the chief of police isn't so bad, but I actually understood what they were talking about this time, so I've learned, I've grown, so I really appreciate it. I, tremendous, what I'm really appreciative is the chance to have worked much closer with our department head team, not that we're siloed, but we all have our own mission, but the chance to have the exposure to our department head team. I'm not lying to you in my weekly updates when I tell you I'm extremely proud to be part of that team, working with Ian closer has given me a much greater appreciation to the work he does to help guide our city, working with John, a much greater appreciation for everything he's doing to build our economic base and well-being, I just violated my rule by starting to name names, because you'll forget them all, all of them, all of our department heads, they've been very helpful to me, they've been very patient with me as I ask questions that I'm sure they rolled their eyes at and said, what a dummy, of cour, just stay out of our business. I've learned a lot, and I'm very, very grateful for it. The last person I, you need to know is extremely valuable for the city, and I'd like to thank her personally, is Julie Nolan, who has made sure that I get my work done, who makes sure that I'm signing the things that I need to know, who makes sure that she sends emails to other people instead of me, when she didn't want me to get involved, she's done a great job, and she's going to be a huge benefit to Jesse as he comes onboard. So we look forward to that with Jesse, I give you my word, I'll do everything I can to make Jesse's transition on smooth. That's the longest report you're going to hear from me, and from now on, I'll be back in the peanut gallery with Chief Noren, making faces at you all, so thank you very much.
All right, Chief, and I would like to also thank you very much for stepping forward, I'm sure the council has no second thoughts about accepting you as fill-in, and you did a fantastic job, it was wonderful to work for you, with you, and we will hope to see you in that peanut gallery again, and your smiling face, thank you so much, Chief, we appreciate it. Okay, all the person reports, anyone have another person report? Left eye, okay, Coleman, Sparks?
I do have one. This Saturday at 8:00 AM is the Wingate Playground Build-Out, and we'll be, Parks Crew's already been working on it, and we're going to be doing the community involvement, so Wingate Subdivision and East Side show up, we're looking for you, so we'll put some notices on on social media also.
Okay, anyone else? Nobody? All right, then, common council, as chair, I would close the council at 8:10. Thank you very much.